It's our December 19th Board Voting Meeting. And before we get started this evening, I just wanted to indicate that we had an executive session this evening prior to the meeting for legal and personnel matters. And there was also an executive session on December 12th to address legal matters. You all rise to the post of conference.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are going to start off the meeting immediately with public comments. An opportunity for anyone in the audience who has anything they would like to address relative to the agenda, or any other comments that would be for the benefit of the school district. I see we have. So if you would please just identify who you are, your address, and fellowship.
Hi, Anne Herring, 10-10 Bunnell Lane. I brought a few gentlemen with me today from Boy Scouts troop 377 Bethany Church on Carsonia. And my son will explain to you why they're here.
My name is T.J. Herring, and we're doing the Citizenship and Community AmeriPaG, and we need to sit in on a school board meeting and list one of the discussions you had in talking about, and write down our own opinion about it.
That's terrific. Good luck with that. We'd like to see your opinion when it's...
Yeah.
Can I just say something quickly? I just want to say that it's really awesome to see you guys out here. I was an Eagle Scout in 2014 for 377, and you really are very fortunate to be in a great troop. And I really thank you guys for coming out this week.
Excuse me, Dr. Amber. Can I just want to correct a record from last week. In my board comments, I had made a statement that I was the only person on the board at the time who voted against the bus facility. I went back and reviewed the minutes from March 17th of 2015, and my colleague Pat Peja also was a no vote on the bus facility. So I just wanted to correct that publicly with the board, and I would ask that Anne correct that in the December 5th minutes.
We're going to go out of order a little bit during this portion of the meeting, and we're going to move to personnel. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Japina for one item on the personnel committee report.
Thank you, Dr. Amber. I'd like to welcome Dr. Patrick Winters here this evening. Doctor Winters, welcome. Doctor Winters, it is recommended that Board of School Directors approves or ratifies his appointment effective upon release from his current district as Assistant Superintendent contingent upon terms and conditions specified with properly executed mutual agreement.
Doctor. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that throughout the interview process, I was very excited by you, Patrick. Very excited to see you coming here, and I think you have exceptional choice of time.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Any additional comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? Do you have one extension? And eight? May I say a few words? Is that okay? Yes, please do. And there's the microphone right over here. It's apparently working.
It really is with great pleasure that I accept the appointment of Assistant Superintendent for Exeter Township School District. I'd like to personally thank Dr. Phillips, the school board, all of the administrators, teachers, district office personnel who were part of the interview process. Your trust in me means a great deal, and I promise that I will serve all the stakeholders of the district with respect, honor, dignity, and diligence. This position is a blessing, not only to me, but to my family. They're all here. They're in the third row, my wife and my four children.
Can we meet them?
You can. You can. They'll stand up for me. Guys, can you stand up, please? So going left to right, that's my oldest, Anna Claire. She's a sophomore in high school. Charlie is my youngest. He's in kindergarten. My wife, Lee, in the middle. Carter is in seventh grade, and then Ela Kate on the end is in second grade.
How do we get there most of the time?
Actually, the boys do wear them occasionally, but tonight we elected to go with holiday colors instead.
I appreciate that. Holiday colors are very nice.
Right, right, right. Thank you so much. But I'm very eager and excited to start as Assistant Superintendent and to really help continue the great work that the team here led by Dr. Phillips is doing. So thank you so much for this amazing professional opportunity, and I look forward to working with you all in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Dr. Amber, I'd like to explain my abstention, if I may. First, I'd like to address Dr. Winters. I completely support your selection as the Assistant Superintendent. You were chosen from a very highly competitive group of talented candidates, and you rose to the top. So I am very supportive of your candidacy. I welcome your family here this evening. It's nice to see them. I think you'll be very proud of your father in his role here, but I wanted to explain to you the reason that I abstained, and it was very simple, that I had some procedural and process issues that I was not comfortable with, and that's why I abstained.
Understood. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Japina. So we're going to move on to the next section of our agenda, which is minutes. We have minutes to approve from the Board Workshop of November 14th. I'm going to do all these at one time for... Oh, I think, Mr. Japina, did you say you had a particular... Did you have a particular... We did. So it's... We're fine. Okay. So we have board meeting minutes from November 14th. We've got board voting minutes from November 21st. So I move that we approve these two sets of events. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Treasurers' Report. This is favorable.
Well, I'm new to Treasurers' Report for the past month.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Brady.
At this point, can you tell us how much we state tape for cyber charter schools for the school? Is there a way to obtain that for next year?
I'll definitely have it again.
Secondly, if there's a way we can identify the cost of specialized education for schools that are outside of the district, or January, please.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. School board actions. We have committee appointments for 2018. We've got committees that include the audit, business functions, curriculum, district athletics, facilities, personnel, policy, student functions, and technology. I move we appoint the committees and the committee chairs.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Can I ask if somebody would read at least the chairs into the record? Because some people may either be reading the minutes or watching the video, and I think it would be good for them to know who the chairs and the committees are.
Doctor Amberger, I can do that.
I think I have it too. For the business function committee, the group chair is Mr. Gellhoff. For the curriculum committee, committee chair is Mrs. Hager. For athletics, the committee chair is Mr. Ahrens. For facilities, it's Mr. Brady. For personnel, it's Mr. Japina. For policy, it's Dr. Amberger. For student functions, it's Mrs. Sutton. For techno...
Stratt.
Pardon? Stratt. Why do I have Sutton down?
You're not wearing his last?
No, I'm... Mine's fake. Stratt. For technology, it's Mrs. Pagea. For career tech, it's Mrs. McLendon. For BCIU... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm actually going into some of the other representatives. I'll go through those right now because they'll be in our next action. For career tech, it's Mrs. McLendon. For BCIU, board, it's Dr. Amberger, the legislative liaison. It's Mr. Gellhoff. For parent forum, it's Mrs. Strattan. And for tax collection, it's Mrs. Pagea.
It's an act of...
It's an act of... It's Mrs. Pagea for audit. And the education foundation, I think it's Mrs. Hager. So those are the assignments in their entirety. The primary assignments are for the committee appointments, and that's the motion on the table. Is there any additional discussion?
I just want to make a comment and say that Dr. Amberger put some thought into this, and I think we should all be appreciative that he made these assignments with the best intention for the benefit of the board and for the district, and I just want to thank him for that.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Okay, appointment representatives and alternate representatives. And again, I think I just went through the areas where we assigned representatives with the seven different areas on the agenda. So I move that we approve those seven representatives and alternates.
Second.
The motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Board policies. Some board policies here that we're approving this evening have been through first and second readings and have been subject to discussion, review, examination. These are our PSBA assisted revisions to our policy manual. The ones for second reading will be Policy 143, which reflects persistent and dangerous schools. Policy 114, standards for victims of violent crimes. Policy 200, which is enrollment of students. Policy 202, eligibility of non-resident students. And those are the ones that are up for second reading. So I move that we move forward and approve these for second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. For first reading, we have seven new policies. These will be subjected to review for this month and next month. They will be up for second reading. Those include Policy 203, which has to do with immunization and communicable diseases. Policy 203.1, HIV infection. Policy 204, which is attendance. Policy 205, postgraduate students. Policy 206, assignment within the district. And Policy 207, confidential communications of students. So I move that we approve these policies for first reading. The motion and a second. Any discussion on any of these policies? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We'll move on to Section 7 of our agenda, business functions. Mr. Gellhoff.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors accept the fiscal year 2016/17 audit report as prepared by Maily LLP and authorize its distribution of the report.
The motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Assessment Appeal. Resolve that the Board of School Directors of Exeter Township authorizes intervention in the assessment appeal filed to number 17-19508 in Berks County Court of Common Pleas by BRERC Exeter PALP. Parcels listed below. Be it further resolved that the Board directs its solicitor, Sweet Stevens, Tatsin Williams, and its administration and officers to take all action necessary to protect the district's interests in the appeal.
Second.
The motion and a second. Any discussion?
I stated last week that I was not in favor of this because doubling somebody's taxes should be enough. I think giving them back a little bit will not be a bad gesture. It would be a good gesture of faith to the business community. Further, will the township be involved in this?
I have to refer that to Mrs. Gellhoff.
No, they have not at this point, particularly in appeals. They, the school district of this nature, takes the lead because our tax mileage is the highest, and we have really the most at risk in appeals like this. So they... You know, I've asked John Scott, the county, if the county would participate, and he said to me, probably not, because the school district has the most to lose, basically. And I could ask the township if they'd be willing to participate with us. You know, I could ask the township, but in the past, the township and the county have always... Appeals have let the school district take the lead because we have a higher amount of revenue for these cases.
Mr. Brady, as I mentioned in our last meeting, I believe that it is in our rights and in our responsibility to all residents of the community to challenge any kind of assessments or to defend an assessment of a property. The said property, Exeter Comus, was transferred and sale to a new owner, BRERC, and then in 2016, at which time the property value increased from the previous purchase price. At that time, the property was reassessed. We had that done professionally by our evaluators. We now are looking to make sure that the tax bill on this property is correct and that we are not sacrificing possible funds that could go towards our operations. If I remember correctly, if we were to go with the balance that was proposed at one point by the owner, we would be reducing our potential tax income by roughly $0.02 million over a period of five years, which can be revisited.
I would also be against letting them reduce their taxes. I think all... Not only citizens should pay their fair share of taxes, but I think business communities should pay their fair share of taxes because they do benefit a lot from an educated society and from the school district. So I would not vote to reduce their property taxes. And I think the district has every right to do a fair assessment and not hating.
I don't dispute the right. As I said in the last meeting, the people at the township have told me that they bring business people in, and the objection is always, your school tax is going to kill you. See you later. So in trying to expand our tax base, making a gesture to people is a good idea. Keep them in the business community.
I agree with your statement.
Any additional discussion? We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
We have one opposed. The motion carries.
Budget transfers. C. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve budget transfers for the month of November 2017 in the amount of $286,145.
Seven.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
D. Change orders for softball dugout projects. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve or ratify the following requests for change orders for the Exeter Softball Dugout Project. Change block manufacturer due to time constraints of original specified material, $1,237. Footings due to incorrect grades on drawings, $1,154.46. Furnish and install an additional 60 lineal feet of seven-foot chain link fence, $921.74. Total added to the bill was $839.20.
Second. Just as a quick clarification, I believe it was negative $1,237 for the change of block manufacturer.
Did I not say that?
No. You said the number, but you didn't say danger. So I just wanted to add that.
Any additional discussion? Yes, Mr. Brady.
I realize that there... I was going to point that with Mr. Harris, but I'm not. The second thing I wanted to break up was that it appears there may have been an error or an omission that occurred in the drawings, which resulted in an additional cost of $1,154.46. I'm wondering if there's been a claim against the engineer or designer or record for the plans regarding that.
Number two. Was it the architect's omission?
Would they have had the cost if they... Was it a question of that the cost would have been there regardless?
I believe so.
Or was it a question of mistake?
I believe it was more of an issue that they ran into during the construction that was unforeseeable by the architect.
Thank you. I think the words incorrect grades may be incorrectly put into the record. I think it may be something that was an established issue that occurred in the field, not that it was incorrect rate on the record. Correct coverage.
Were you making any suggestion for change to the motion?
I would suggest modifying the motion to say modifications to footings due to infield additions or additions found at time of construction.
So we have a motion to amend.
Second.
The motion. The second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And proceed with the... This particular item with this amended item. Is there any further discussion on the amended item? Is everybody clear on amendment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thanks, Mr. Brady. Next is our personnel committee, Mr. Japina. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve or ratify the following resignation. Administrative staff, Marcy T. Eldon, Director of Strategic Resources, resigning with effective date later than February 2nd, 2018. And then there is certificated student support staff.
Second.
The motion and a second. Any discussion?
Marcy, I'd like to thank you for your service to the district and all the stuff. Thanks for your assistance in getting through.
She was promoted with the... Marcy, the same thing. I appreciate all the effort that you exerted on behalf of everybody within the Exeter School District. And I wish you the best on that short afternoon.
Thank you.
And I'd have to say the same thing. Anybody who's worked with Marcy, Marcy knows it's a great experience. It's always a pleasure to come into your office and speak to you and advise you. So thanks for the...
Thank you very much.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve or ratify the following retirements. Administrative staff, amended from October 17, 2017 board meeting. Susan M. Cook, Powattam Creek Principal, retiring effective December 22nd. And support staff, John J. Maguire.
Seven.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Doctor Amberger, if I may. I went through Jackson Wall while Mrs. Cook was the principal, and I think that we owe her a great debt for all the service. And it may not have always seemed that way when I was a younger man, because she was... She ran a tight ship. But overall, I think there are many people that should be very appreciative of the work that she did for many, many students. So I want to thank her for that and congratulate her on semi-retirement, because I understand she'll be returning on several occasions for different projects, but I wish her well.
Thanks, Mr. Ahrens. Any additional comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve or ratify the following appointment. Administrative staff, Jeffrey P. Freeze, Powattam Creek Principal, replacing Susan Cook, with an annual salary of $120,000 effective yesterday. Through application.
Second.
Would you like to do this one more time?
I could.
Sure. We'll do this one separately. Do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve or ratify the following appointments on your certificated staff and support staff. And I don't know if you guys can break out substitutes, guest teachers, and all that stuff.
Please break out the guest teachers.
So let me read that one more time. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve or ratify the following appointments. Certificated staff, support staff, certified substitutes, and support substitutes. The motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. It is recommended that the Boards of School Directors approve or ratify the following appointments. Guest teachers, Lea Mampola, M.A. English.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Is that one more? The motion carries. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve or ratify the following leaves of absence. Certificated staff and support staff.
Second.
The motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Change of status. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve or ratify the following request for change of status. Support staff, Michael K. Franklin. The motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the attached list of forced requests. I'm not going to go through that list.
Request that we separate Chris Howard or Howard first.
Second. I don't think we need a second.
Don't need a second. Requesting... Is there any discussion on that? Okay, we'll just go ahead and remove that with that and separate it. Okay?
So we need a second.
We still need a second on the rational motion?
Original workshop is second.
So we're voting on that minus Mrs. Howard. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve. Kristy M. Howard for Mathewa University, dissertation research seminar, 111 of 2018 to 0430 of 2018. Wait, wait. Sorry. Any discussion?
Doctor Amberger, I just want to reiterate one of the things that I said at the first meeting and prior meeting that I will be abstaining from this vote due to a relationship that I have with Mrs. Howard. A familiar relationship, and I'll be abstaining as a part. A familiar relationship, uh, and I'll be abstaining as a part.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions?
No statement.
Motion carries.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approves the staff conferences.
Any discussion?
Yes, um, Mr. Gill. The, the, the last one, attendees to the PSLA two thousand eighteen Limitless Learning, it's held in, uh, Hershey. We have lodging for a hundred and seventy-five dollars. I looked online and found considerably cheaper lodging with four-star hotel. So, I, I found a hundred and ten and a hundred and eleven dollars.
Per night or two nights? Is this a...
That's a total cost. That's a total cost?
This two nights. Third through fifth.
Total lodging is what's in there? But, that helps.
Any additional discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Japina. Student functions, this is Strang.
My phone is not working either. All right. It is reported that the field trips below within a sixty-mile radius have been approved. It is recommended that the board of school directors approves the field trips below beyond the sixty-mile radius. The senior high ski club members will travel to Seven Springs, Pennsylvania on January twelfth through the fourteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
The motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approves an agreement between Kids' Peace, National Centers, and Exeter Township School District for private academic programming for student number one-nine-one-one-zero-zero.
Sorry.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approves an agreement between Cottage Seven Education and Education, and Exeter Township School District for special educational emotional support programming for student number two-three-zero-five-two-six.
Second.
Any discussion?
Question.
Mr. Brady.
We're noting the cost is expected to be two hundred dollars per day for this, uh, student. Do you have an anticipated total cost that will be incurred?
Uh, it all depends on the length of the tenure, but I'll turn that over to the document.
It depends on how long the student will be staying there, um, and as a student, um, Cottage Seven is a new name for maybe many of you, it's not a program we typically use. Um, it's a program...
Excuse me?
What did you say?
It's, I know you may be used to like Kids' Peace and Devereaux, and Cottage Seven is a new program. It's actually a family that moved in from Pottstown, and Cottage Seven is a program that Pottstown School District started. So the student is staying there in a transition piece, but the student will probably transitioning to our district very soon. So, um, it may be a very short time, but the student is there.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Hamburger. Any additional discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next section, um, committee reports, curriculum, uh, programs, curriculum committees. Mrs. Hacker, report.
I have nothing to report.
Thanks, Mrs. Hacker. Uh, technology committee. Ms. Patient.
Um, last, last month, the, the tech committee of the board met and provided us an update on the following agenda items. The infrastructure updates, telephone, wireless servers, uh, student device initiatives, which have now been in the, in the senior high school, the junior high school, and I think by now, uh, the Rifeington School. Is that, has that been completed now?
Yep.
Yes, okay. Uh, we tell, they talked about staff development, helping, uh, teachers, um, acclimate to technology, go, go harder down into the grades, um, Mr. Wilczak, uh, Wilco, uh, Dan Wilczek. Uh, he and, uh, Missy, they, they go into the, anywhere in the school district that they're needed and, you know, show, show teachers the different initiatives they can do, the different things that they can do with the children in order to, um, get the children more involved in, in the process of learning. So, um, um, the presentation from the evening can be found on the Exeter website under administration, technology services, and department links. So, if any further information, you can go there.
Thank you, Ms. Patient.
First standing IU board of directors, uh, I've taken over, uh, Doc, by Mr. Quinter's, um, role as representative for the district on the IU board. I think our next board meeting is in January, and I'll report back, uh, after that meeting.
Athletic committee? Mr. Brady.
Uh, we have a motion, uh, a recommendation from the administration, uh, to host the Ath- uh, the Special Olympics, um, in spring of twenty eighteen, and in preparation for that recommendation, I'll refer to, uh, Dr. Phillips to explain a little bit more about that program.
Sorry.
Thank you. Um, well, we're not looking for a motion, this is, this is a report.
Well, I, I said in, in readiness for the recommendation, I, I wanted Dr. Phillips to give an update, so I apologize, Dr. Brady.
We have been asked by the, uh, Special Olympics Committee of the county to host the event. Uh, my understanding is that at some time in the past, we had hosted it. Uh, I think it's an excellent opportunity to show off all the, uh, our fields, ours, uh, just, or our facilities, as well as a great experience for the district. Um, so it's my recommendation that we, uh, approve hosting the event. Where will be no cost to the district, Special Olympics will handle all of the costs. Um, we will be looking for volunteers though, so, uh, anybody that's interested, why not?
Dr. Phillips, just a quick clarification, this will be at, uh, Don Thomas Stadium with high school.
Yes, yes.
It is recommended that the Exeter School District host the Special Olympics field day at Don Thomas Stadium in the spring of twenty eighteen, to be on April twenty-sixth as the regular scheduled date, as well as a rain date for April twenty-seventh for the Burks County Schools.
Second.
Are you going on this?
Yes.
Now we are. Is already on this. Any discussion?
I just want to say, my background is in special ed, I'm an occupational therapy assistant, and when I got the email that this was hopefully going to be happening in a discussion, I was very excited. So you can sign me up to volunteer for that.
Excellent.
I've done it in the past when it was at Pittstown, and we're very excited that Exeter will be hosting.
I'm sure it's going to be a great event. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We'll split this next section into two, I'm not sure why, because we do have a legislative liaison and a township liaison, and I think, Mr. Gill, you're our legislative liaison?
I have no report.
No report. Um, Mr. Japina?
Township liaison. At this point, I don't have a comprehensive report, but I will promise one in the future. Um, I think that's one of the areas where we're going to work very aggressively as a school board, is enhancing our relationship with the township. But I would ask, uh, Dr. Hamburger, if you could just perhaps give a quick summary of the hearing that was held on Monday related to the bus porn and, um, where we are. Sure. Uh, this passed Monday in, um, in court in Reading, uh, the township and the school district were both represented. Um, and, 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 um, the hearing in front of Judge, uh, Willis in, in Burks County Court, uh, had primarily two different, um, aspects to it. One was, uh, an appeal of the, um, the zoning hearing board's decision to, um, to disallow the construction of any type of transportation facility only one, uh, school property. And that was a decision that was made a few years ago, is now finally making it to, to court in front of, um, Judge Willis. Uh, the school district was, uh, represented by Mark Kaplan, and the, um, the township was represented by Sam Cortez of, um, Fox Rob China. Uh, there was also a, um, arguments, uh, in regard to a declaratory judgment. A declaratory judgment is essentially asking the court for an opinion on, uh, legal matters. In this particular case, uh, which, uh, which, which aspect of law takes precedent in this particular case? Does the school district, uh, prevail because, uh, the school code requires the school district to provide transportation for students? And is, and the school code does say that the district has the right to identify, uh, the properties where, um, construction could occur for the benefit of students? Or is it the, uh, the township zoning hearing, um, ordinances that, um, or the zoning ordinances that, uh, that prevail? So that's a, that's a declaratory judgment. Both cases are, uh, under consideration by Judge Willis. Uh, my understanding is that he's, uh, expected to render a decision within the, the next few weeks, and as soon as we're aware of that decision, it's real, uh, circulated, um, you know, among our board. And I'm sure we'll be talking about it at our, um, at our next, uh, formal board meeting or workshop. And I think that we should just be clear that even if the, uh, district were to prevail, that does not necessarily mean we're moving forward with the project. It just means that we've received a decision on an outstanding case, and that gives us more information to work for this and move forward.
Exactly right.
Yeah, I think that, that, it allows us to move forward, I think, in some respects. We'll put the hearing hopefully behind this, with this, um, with this decision and be able to move forward with, uh, discussions with the board in terms of how we address transportation and pool. Thank you, uh, Mr. Japina. Uh, the next is Bush, Correa, and Tech Center Joint Operating Committee, Mrs. McFlunton.
I have not attended my first meeting yet, so therefore I do not have a report.
Thanks, Ms. McFlunton. Uh, facilities committee, Mr. Brady.
Yes. During the most recent athletic committee, uh, recall correctly, first meeting in November, there was a question brought up regarding, you didn't have it yet, in October, during the youth wrestling program of Exeter Township and access to using the lounge gymnasium in this building. And at that time, it was suggested that be brought to the facilities committee. So, we had a conversation regarding, and I wanted to extend that conversation to the entire board, because I think it would be a good idea to give some kind of direction to that group and where to understand where they can practice and they can do their operation. The group, from my understanding, I don't know if there is a representative here or not from wrestling tonight, I don't know if Michael's, I think, or is it, Michael, you can tell it for me as I go. If I recall correctly, this is a group that goes from first grade to eighth grade, just eighth grade? And currently, they utilize the school district's wrestling room in the high school. However, the facility has some limitations in the fact that the high school wrestlers need to use that facility for their training and ongoing exercises and operations. And because of that, and the size of this program, we have, I forgot how many students we have involved, children, probably a hundred fifty to two hundred children, roughly, I guess?
If the, um, junior high and youth programs have grown to participation in nearly a hundred teenagers.
Okay, so we have a hundred children that are involved in this, um, who, you know, children that are our student body, as well as members of our community. And what we've had a request is if the elementary program can put their mats in our gymnasium here and use this as a training facility. I posed questions back to Mr. McGath, who then was able to obtain some questions, and my questions were the following. First question I had was what happens regarding cleaning of the mats? And I was informed of the mat cleaning before and after practice in order to make sure that we don't have any potential diseases carried back and forth, which is a major concern in a wrestling environment. Uh, another question we had was securing the building. One suggestion, the response was we may want to look into getting some kind of gating system to make sure that there's access restricted throughout the building. The other question was right at that, access in and out of the building, make sure only those children who participate in it or the parents can get in and out of the building, and I think that's an issue we still have to work on. Uh, fourth issue discussed was parking. We do have a parking lot, and though it can be empty, a hundred families coming in and parking would fill up that lot and may lead into the surrounding community, so there could be some concern regarding that. And then the next issue had specifically really dealt with the wrestling mats. The team and slash club would like to keep their mats permanently, not permanent as they blew down, but they would like to leave them down below their seat. In order to do that, they said it's okay to have gym in there, but you can't wear any shoes on it. And shoes are classified as anything from a sneaker up to a spiked heel. When I heard it was a sneaker, that's when I had some concerns. I can understand any kind of regular shoe wear like I would wear, but when it comes to regular athletic wear, I have a question regarding potential telling students they can't be on that floor, because we have a, another school that does utilize our building here. And one of the rewards for their good behavior or the activities they participate in is they think we can use the gymnasium. To tell students that they have to take their gym, their shoes off, but to make sure that it happens, can be a lot of policing that I think it might be above and beyond. So that is a concern I have, because it did not sound to me, and I may be mistaken, that the club was interested in rolling the mats up after a practice. So I wanted to bring it before the board, because I thought, you know, at this point, it's been going well for about a month and a half, two months or more, and I think that we need to give a solid answer back to the club in order they can understand where they're going to be moving forward with their practices. So that's why I'm bringing this forward. Maybe Mike, you can fill in the blanks.
I'd, I'd like to just fill in a few of the blanks. The, the program's looking to have a permanent space where kindergarten through eighth grade can practice. The space they use now is cramped, so they practice in shifts. The location is cordialization, and, uh, there are columns in the room where they practice, which potentially leave injury. Everybody's wrestled before or they practice? It's in the high school. The high school wrestling. Okay. Um, the wrestling boosters believe that they can raise forty thousand dollars to prepare the lounge, gym is a permanent wrestling space, but they say the success of their fundraising efforts hinge on potential donors knowing that the space is dedicated for wrestling. I'm just going to try and move through this quickly here. There were a number of issues that raised, I think Mr. Brady raised those issues, which are legitimate issues. Um, they indicated that beyond raising the forty thousand dollars for the space, the wrestling boosters would contribute toward utility cost. The issue had the support of the athletic committee in September, it was determined that the issue then would be forwarded from the athletics committee, which I chaired at the time, onto the facilities committee, and it resides now with Mr. Brady, which is why it's been due to the board.
So now it is for the board to discuss. I know that, for example, I know that, hey, you have your band that practices on stage, and I know you may have had some concerns because of students possibly getting on the stage and interrupting. I know you probably leave your stands behind in other incidents. So that would be a concern about securing and making sure that that is. I think that what I looked at was if we could work through this, because the big question I have is the mats. I, I feel that it is a public resource that the community owns all our buildings, all the township owns it, as well as the, um, St. Lawrence Borough, and I feel that we should be open to allowing the children to use this, just like the children would be going over to use one of our basketball courts for the youth basketball program, or their, or the soccer fields, et cetera. Um, I think if the program is able to fund themselves, I think that is definitely a separate direction. I am still concerned though about the mats, because I believe we wouldn't be able to lease them to make sure people were not wearing footwear on the mats. I think that is probably an unrealistic, um, request, because when students are using the rest of the building during the day, and they're able to go to the gym, they're going to want to wear their sneakers if they're shooting basketball, it's not going to let them wear Air Fever soft. So that's why I'm putting it before the board to have a conversation in order that we can get back to the wrestling program, because I don't want to say what we can do or can't do, I'm just expressing Jim Brady's opinion on things.
Mr. Brady, can I, can I just introduce?
If there's anyone who speaks on this.
Mr. Bojic is, is a prison...
I wish you had said you were here. I'm looking over, that would have raged your end.
Mr. Bojic is the president of Swing Fever Band, and maybe you could describe a little bit about the band and, and how they utilize the facility.
My name is George Kabočić, and I'm the president of Swing Fever Dance Band. Swing Fever currently, you know, as is discussed here, does use the stage area to, to rehearse, and we are extremely grateful to the township, the school district, I mean, for allowing us to use that. Um, it's difficult to find rehearsal space, and not only is this space, but it's, it's really prime, because we've got the stage and, and we can, you know, bounce off the wall. because we've got the stage and we can, you know, bounce off the wall. One of the things that I would like to identify with you is that the band participants are not just people from outside the Exeter Township. Twenty percent of Swing Fever are Exeter Township residents and myself included. I live at nine sixty Limekill Road in beautiful downtown Limekill. And if any of you have passed through there, you know what a wonderful place Limekill is. I would hope that we could come to some type of compromise, you know, where the wrestlers can use, you know, the bulk of the gym. I mean, if you've looked, if you haven't looked in there, there's a movable wall that separates that room into about one-third, two-thirds-ish. And right now, the stage area where we rehearse is in the one-third hunk along with a giant amount of excess, school district, old chairs, tables. And they've been in there for about the two years that Swing Fever has been using that as a rehearsal space. Now, you know, I'm hoping that, one, we could either leave that movable wall up and the wrestlers could use the entire two-thirds area and the band could use the one-third area as we are now. Or if they need the entire space, you know, we rehearse on Wednesday nights, if we could come in and put that movable wall up on a Wednesday night so that we could separate ourselves from them, that would be awesome.
Mike, how often, I don't know, I just want to add to the conversation. Mike, do you know how often the wrestlers are here or would be here? Because I don't. And what their season typically wants?
Well, it's a two-part question. First of all, wrestling is a year-round sport, as all sports are pretty much year-round now. What I would suggest is if it's one day a week and you're, you know, looking for some sort of compromise, and that seems to be something fair that we should be able to talk to the wrestling folks about and see if they, you know. I mean, first of all, we're assuming that forty thousand dollars is going to achieve what they want to achieve in that facility to begin with. And I don't know really how we arrived at a, how they arrived at a forty thousand dollar figure, but, you know, I do believe that if it's only one day a week, I have to imagine that there's something to figure out. I mean, that's, we're getting, we're getting ninety percent.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. May I just, I doubt, and I don't think it was your intention, Mr. Brady, to try and figure out a final to these questions. Would it, do you think it would be more appropriate for you and I maybe to have a joint meeting to work specifically on some of these issues? Because as I recall, the last Athletics Committee meeting, and I think maybe a previous one as well, was more to introduce the concept. And there was a general discussion about some of the concerns, but I don't think that there was an attempt at getting resolution on the different items that were identified.
The way, the way- The way we were about to come to the board and have a conversation at the whole because-
I meant the Athletics Committee.
The Athletics Committee approved the project to the extent that a committee can approve anything. We took it out of Athletics Committee, pushed it over to Facilities because Athletics at the time supports what wrestling wants to do, but it's a facility decision at this point because the facility has to be reconfigured. So I think the recommendation is you can have a discussion as part of Facilities, but I don't see it as an Athletics issue because it was moved out of that committee.
My first question regarding the wall, because I don't know how far you're talking around, is does that wall go from floor to ceiling? Or is this, I'm going to go to the gentleman who lived here for one and all.
Yeah, I did live here for ten years. I have to ring the bell to get in. Anyway. The movable wall was problems from time to time. And every time there was a problem with the movable wall, it was an expensive endeavor to do it. We moved that wall very, very seldom. We tried, that was an ongoing, you know, open door, open the wall, close the wall. That wasn't something we did at all. Over a ten-year period, I think there were at least three or four times where the wall had to be replaced and, I mean, repaired. There's dirt in their tracks, there's stuff in their tracks down below, and the wall is extremely heavy. It's pulled by cables and it's, and there were, you know, cable breakage because of, there were just sort of problems with that wall. So to think that wall could go back and forth every day or whenever is, in my opinion, not a good idea.
Well, the reason I brought it up was because if we're looking at any kind of roll-out mats going in, just because there's a wall, pulling back a wall, I don't think that solves the problem. I think it's more of a long line. We want to have almost, if it is broken, it has a third, a two-third room versus a half and a half. If we were to suggest going this way, I would think we'd want to just establish it as just that. The room stays as it is, a permanent, and we'll consider that movable wall a permanent structure. Because I think that according to Dr. Chlofer, and I have no reason to question because you lived through the misery, I think it would be better to not try to have movable parts and then because bigger issues like you've had in other buildings.
Well, I think we had it repaired about two, two years ago, wasn't it, Rob?
It was before my time. I have not seen that wall moved since I've been here.
It was repaired, and maybe George, you were here when that happened.
Yes.
And because it was stuck open for a while, and I think there was a mechanic who came in and actually repaired the mechanism. So it may work, but I think you're right, Dr. Chlofer. I mean, it is one of those things where it's very heavy and I think it could be very problematic and prone to break if we would do it on a frequent basis. Once a week might be too much for it. I can't say for sure. We may have to test it out a little bit. Maybe, Rob, you can take a look at it and test it and see what happens cautiously.
Sure. I'll get it stuck open, sure.
I think two things. I think, yeah, we probably open that wall twice a year. In the school year, we probably move that wall twice a year because of that situation. And I don't think it's much, as much of one-third, one-third, two-thirds. I think it's much closer to half, half in size.
What was that, the one side?
I think, I think the two sides are more, more equal than, than one-third, two-thirds. I think considerably more towards, towards, towards-
We can figure that out pretty easily, I think.
So, I mean, I'm generally supportive of this, but I think that there are definitely things that we're identifying that need to be finalized and put on paper most likely because I don't know if we're going to be able to solve all these. So would it just be better to refer this back to the Facilities Committee with the intent of producing some type of written form to bring to the board for approval?
I'd rather talk it out now. And the reason I say that is because I think we're just going back and forth and the wrestling committee, four months from now, have the same answer as they have now, assuming we don't have an answer. What I would request is information back, I think. And what I would like to know is, is the bill, is the room big enough if we leave it as just with the permanent divider? The area that we have the existing various materials, can we clear that out, which would then provide a half a gym for the school, which then would not have to go into a matted area? So they would have to take their shoes off and that would provide them with a good recreational space. Also, at the same time, since it appears that right now, that school's able to use that space as a gym and it's not hurting the band's rehearsal area, which is on the stage, it appears that that's already workable area. If we're able to then take the other half of the room, which is dedicated to a community use and it's good, and it's appropriate size, obviously it comes down to the community and the group telling us. I mean, I would suggest moving forward that way, but it comes down to knowing if it's going to be taken.
Well, I, I don't know. I think that what we probably ought to do is we ought to bring the interested parties together and walk through that space. It is a facilities issue at this point, so it's really a matter of whether or not the space can be configured to meet the needs of all the parties that have an interest in using it. I don't think we're going to solve that tonight without having a full understanding of what everybody needs and what the capabilities are of changing that room on a weekly basis to fit the needs.
Well, I think we have to change the wall for this one. If we go with the solution on proposing it, leave it as permanent wall where that movable wall is, the mats can stay where the mats are. The other half of the room, if we're able to get rid of all the miscellaneous school equipment that's there, that can become a gym, as it always was a gym. The stage stays as it's a stage where George and Dave and friends can practice. And then we have basically three uses of the room that are able to then allow for more use than the room currently has. We have basically a headspace that's used for storage, that to me is a good waste of gym. And we basically, other than that, there's no one else using the room. And we have a community group that's just, that's using it, that fits their needs. I think that would probably be a way that we could possibly provide to a lot of goodwill for the community. I think it's a good use of our basic knowledge. But it comes back, I think it is possible, Miss O'Leary, after you contact me and then we can afford maybe a walk room sometime early in the second week of January, that would be good for it.
So I'm kind of, furniture is in the, in this room. Do you have any?
Chairs, tables, same thing we got rid of from the other.
Not, I mean, a lot of it?
Yes, fills up the whole room.
So you think, I mean, there's like, there's a lot of places that probably we wanted, no?
We did that in the first room. We threw away a lot of stuff. We got, we missed so, very few.
Right. And we'll put it, what, put it back on public surplus and finish inventory when my staff has time to finish inventory. But aren't the basketball nets on the side that's cleared out now?
Yes. So you mean current process, you move those up?
We will move them over.
Well, we can just determine what, which side has the basketball nets, the basketball side, the other side doesn't have basketball nets, so the wrestling side, as long as it's a fifty percent.
A retreat in a lot of time.
This may be a little different in that this is, the agenda for this is going to be primarily developed by, provided by the PSBA. So, and I think it's in many respects an attempt to try to consolidate our board and how we function as a board. I think it's four hours, not three, but it's a fairly long day, but we can, what are your thoughts on that?
I guess I just need to understand what we're looking to accomplish. If we're looking to address board process and protocol versus school district issues, then maybe we can do that in four hours. But if we were going to dive into larger district issues, we wouldn't be able to.
And that was not the intention to go beyond board. It's a board maintenance, board development, team building, for lack of a better term. So I think we can do that, and, you know, and I know PSBA has a prescribed program. We'll add additional topics if we feel we need those.
I'm just going to go on record as I am not falling into Jerry Gale's arms.
I'll go on record as saying I wouldn't catch us, so. You got that for the men?
Hunter, you had it on. I just wanted to get some input from the rest of the board. Last voting meeting, policies number 137, 137.1, which deal with home school students and home school students involved in extracurricular activities. I explored that a little bit from comments that I had heard during the campaign relative to an interest of parents to see if there was any way to allow home school students to be involved in regular instruction on a limited basis. I wanted to see if there was a general interest from the board members to have one of the, either the policy committee or a special working group investigate this question. Because I personally think that it would be a very worthy thing to have our home school students who vote, whose parents believe that on one subject or another, they're not able to fully accommodate the needs of their child and allow them to be involved in some way in regular instruction. And this would require a policy change, and that's why I'm asking for some general input from the board. I have some details, but this is mostly a concept for investigation. I'm not presenting anything at this time.
Yeah, and just to clarify, policy 137, homeschooling really does prohibit home school students currently from taking coursework, taking actual classes in the district. They are either a home schooler right now, or they're attending our schools. I think you had mentioned in some of the preliminary information you provided for me as part of the policy committee that there may be four of the districts in the county that accommodate home school, twin valley maybe one. And this is, and I know there are at least three others in the county. So, and they'll have policies that are more expansive and allow for students to, on a limited basis. I don't think, I think some of the caveats are that, I mean, obviously you can't come to class for like five classes a day and then consider yourself to be on a school, or it would have to be, you know, limited and probably limited to those subjects where the home school family might find it extremely difficult to replicate that service because of the facilities or type of equipment that might be necessary.
Just to add a couple of things to what Dr. Pember said. In my initial conversation with both him and Dr. Phillips, they identified a couple of different areas, including transportation, enrollment in courses. And there's a number of reference points that we can look to, to some of the other districts' policies. The most comparable district probably being Wilson School District, which also has an allowance for this policy or for this procedure. So I think we definitely have a bunch of touch points to begin with, and I think we have some ideas about how to get started. I'm just looking for some general approval that this may show up on an agenda at a future date after some investigation and possibly some drafting of changes to those policies.
Hunter spoke to me about this, I'm in full support of it. I think it's a great idea to bring kids in, and also their parents are paying taxes.
I heard the same interest from families, and I also support the investigation of including them in activities.
Dr. Miller, you, I think you're responsible for our home school program.
Yes.
Do you have any thoughts about this? Have you been approached at all by families who would be interested if this policy would be enacted by the board?
Yes, over the years I've been here, I have had parents at various times ask for their student to be involved in various subjects. But we've been following the policy and they have not, but yes, I've heard from families about it.
What are your thoughts about it generally, are you supportive?
Well, I'll tell you my honest opinion. My honest opinion is I think philosophically, all of our students are our students. And if they're home school students or they attend, I think we're looking at moving toward a blended model of, you know, online courses and courses in our classrooms. The other piece that I also see happen sometimes is that a student may be a home school student when they're younger, but as the coursework gets a little harder, you know, more detailed, parents move children everywhere to some cyber charter schools to be able to get that access. And again, I prefer that our students stay with us, and, you know, in many ways. And so, but I also feel that it gives students access to, if they're looking to go to college and they're home school students, it gives them a little more exposure to what maybe classroom independent work is like and that kind of thing. So it gives them exposure to different types of learning environments that they might need to be able to tap into later. So if you're asking my honest opinion, that is my honest opinion.
I would say also, I agree. I taught a student last year in my ninth grade honors English course, and she was homeschooled. And it was her parents' responsibility to get her to school, but she took my class at the end of the day. So she did drive, or ride transportation home. And she accommodated when we had early dismissals or half days, or, you know, her parents accommodated all of that for her to be in attendance. And I was grateful to have her and meet the family and have her perspective. And she made new friends, and I thought it was a good experience. And I think it goes back to also what Dr. Miller said about, you know, the open campus philosophy and really things starting to change with hybrid and blended. I think it's going to be something we're going to have to further investigate for sure.
My assumption would be it works probably a little better, it's a bit more appropriate for secondary level students. I'm wondering whether, if a policy would be enacted, whether it limited the secondary level students.
Transportation definitely has to be considered though. I mean, transportation is just definitely, when I looked at this, we can't be transporting, at least the way our models are now, we can't be transporting students for one class here and one class there and back and forth. It would be turning to like a taxi cab, Uber service.
Well, and that's why you create the course, the schedule to accommodate the transportation, the parents would have to pick up the pieces.
That piece, that piece would definitely have to be something that we'd have to look at our limitations and our current pieces and everything. But that's, that's one of the, you know, the one thing about transportation.
Then Sean, does it become some sort of discriminatory issue for those folks that can't participate in a program because they don't have the ability to do travel?
It would be better, obviously you'd have to write the policy the right way. Let's just put it that way. I mean, you would have to take that into account.
Right, with like parent approval and parents knowing they have to accommodate the transportation and so forth, right?
Correct.
Right. And we can look at other split districts' policies and see how they're outlined, that are working successfully.
Most of the policies I've seen, it's absolutely the parents' responsibility.
Right, correct.
That's a condition of success.
And I think the bottom line is if we add this and we allow this to happen, if people can't come, they're no better off, or they're no worse off than they are now, whereas hopefully improving it for the children who can participate in these. And that's, we should be looking at that positive and hope that maybe those other families can find a way, if they find a beneficial for their student.
About how many kids would that be, Dr. Miller?
I mean, in my experience, I've had, I get maybe less than five calls a year, you know, for someone asking about, very much they're focused on band and music typically, and occasionally a higher high school level class. But a lot of time it's band and music, and that's for sometimes the younger schools. I think Dr. Slaffer and I had a phone call two years ago, a parent wanted someone to be in their music program or course program or something. So the music, we have a wonderful music department, and so families are interested in that. That's been something that people have called about.
Ms. Renss. One thing, building off of what Dr. Miller just said, most of the changes would occur in policy number 137. But under policy 137.1, it specifically talks about extracurricular involvement for home school students. There's one section that may, if we were going to change this to allow home school students to be participating, require maybe three words, it would be very minimal, but it would allow them to be involved in some of the extracurricular activities that require your participation in an in-school, regular instruction class at this time. So right now, that would eliminate your ability to participate in some of the music programs that require you to be in class, but also participate in the extracurricular area. Marching band is an excellent example of this at the high school level. I'm not sure if that's the same thing that Dr. Miller was talking about and how former requests have been. But that's one of the examples of where this might be a problem for anybody who's interested in doing that.
That will also suggest we make sure that secondary principals are really involved in this discussion as well, because they may be aware of some hidden elements that we're not. And I'm not sure if there's a child accounting issue, Dr. Phillips, you know, in terms of how we report attendance in the state, what the attendance standard was supposed to be? I mean, can they come one day and not the next day? And if they don't, are they subject to the same kind of, let's say, truancy conditions? So I think there are some kind of secondary implications that we have to kind of think of. But I think, you know, making sure that our board principals are on top of it, they probably pick out whatever business. Mr. Renss, you have.
Oh, you are. Is there anybody uncomfortable with this? Because if so, could we refer this to the policy committee to start exploring with the key stakeholders involved, such as our principals and the administration, and Dr. Miller?
Are there any concerns about the policy committee taking this up with the administration and then coming back to the board with some reports and possibly some sample policy change?
I think it would be a very good idea.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, good. All right, thanks for bringing that up, Ms. Renss. Very good. Any other comments of board members?
I would like to just say for the record that Jerry and Hunter and I attended PSBA new director training this past Saturday from eight to four in Mechanicsburg.
Eight, Hunter.
Yeah, eight, Hunter was a little late, but there's icy roads and so forth, we did it. And I don't know about the guys, but I think we all, I definitely learned so much, specifically about the part that I'm not involved in currently, which was the business aspect and taxes and the legal stuff and financial and that. One of the things that really stuck out to me, and I think we need to remember today, is that we're a team of ten. And Dr. Phillips is that tenth guy, or girl in some other cases, but.
Usually a guy, most.
Yeah, usually a guy, that's right. In some other districts, it could be a woman, is what I was meaning. But, you know, and I. But, you know, and I really, I look forward to a board retreat because they did talk about that as well, and how that's about the team building and how we need to become a little bit more cohesive. And we have five new members and, you know, a lot of changes, and we're going to be bringing in a new assistant superintendent and so forth, so I look forward to that. And I, it was one other thing I wanted to say. Oh, I know what it was. I would highly recommend, and I'm not sure where the, you know, what our membership is involved with PSBA, but that even some of the old board members, or veteran, board members attend one of those trainings because they talked about a lot of things that I think that everybody needs a reminder or a pressure on, and, you know. I think the information we got was just, it was a long day, but it was, it was so valuable. So thank you for sending us, and, you know, I hope everyone gets an opportunity to do so as well. And I also really enjoyed my tour around the district and meeting the teachers and the principals, and it was really cool to see just such different activities going on, but just the students, every building, the students were so well behaved in the halls, polite, all engaged in their learning, no matter what was going on. I was so impressed with Exeter in general, and especially me, you know, I see that on, you know, somewhat of a daily basis, but meeting the, also the business people and the people behind the scenes, it was, we could have, we felt we could have hung out for hours, right? So anyway, thank you so much.
Extremely enthusiastic for that. Any other comments?
When we talked about transportation costs, as you said, Dr. Miller, this past month, we have, is it roads that we have now that does the?
New roads does some of the things that some of our runs.
Yeah. So we had, we had one van, two vans, three vans, and one bus, and it was about, what, 20 kids?
Dr. Van, 20 kids? I'm putting you right here with Dr. Miller. No, I'll just stay in this. It was about, it's the non-homic route that we contracted out, it was 12 students, and then we have two homeless where we do the AM or the PM. We weren't able to accommodate those two. We do transport several homeless students, but we didn't have the original vans for that and couldn't get anywhere. And then there is a van that we contracted out, it's a new story, for two severely autistic students. One of them, I don't know, I'm not positive on that, but one of them is a group coach resident, and he will build back to go to the home district where his parents live, who may will reimburse us for the cost of tuition as well as transportation.
But just listen to this, you know, one van, I don't know, about three kids or something, $115 per trip, another one, $230 a day per trip, back and forth, and another one, $290. And for this total, we paid $10,400 this month to transport about, I don't know, 18, at the most, 20 children. And it's very, very costly to the district, and I don't know what we can do about it, but it's a, it's a big, it's a big drain on, I guess we got more, we got more drivers here. I know we got, so we got a couple of, are you working on anybody else?
I got a driver, that's the last one I had.
I'm sorry?
That's the last one I had in the pipeline from now, he was just supporting tonight, so we're working on more.
Now you still have two months.
I had less than that.
Look back, look back, if you want to work. I'm thankful that we got to listen to you then.
And I think that that was like our biggest thing with all this transportation stuff is this hearing, and once we get word from the judge, from the common law, or the county, sorry, that then we can move forward with, because I think we all are, transportation's torn in aside, you know, our side, and I think we all are going to try to figure that out, right? Hopefully.
I don't know about that one.
We're going to try.
Keep positive.
Any other comments? I'll accept the motion for adjutant. No second, small favor?
We have two hours until lights go.